Good morning and welcome to Tuesday Cafe. My name's Gary Gibbons. I am pinch hitting this morning in place of Sean Conan, and we're coming to you live from the studios of WMNF Community Radio 88.5 FM in Tampa, Florida on Tuesday, November the 26th. It's Thanksgiving week. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, or as we say in my family, Happy Thanksgibbons. So enjoy your weekend and your holiday. And this morning, we're going to talk about something that seems to never leave the news these days. Pleased to welcome as our guest today, Lisette Hanowitz from the St. Petersburg City Council. She's a former federal prosecutor and is the only attorney serving on the St. Petersburg City Council. She was one of the people who voiced numerous concerns about the wording of the contracts when they were being negotiated, and she ultimately voted no on the Ray's-Hines agreement when it came up for vote last summer. As many of you've heard, the situation with the Ray's new stadium and the redevelopment of the historic gas plant district in downtown St. Petersburg is, I guess, in a state of flux, to put it mildly. And some folks, especially some of the top brass of the Ray's organization, are saying that the deal may be dead. So, welcome to Tuesday Cafe, Councilwoman Lisette Hanowitz. We're so happy to have you here.
Thank you so much for having me here, Gary. I'm very happy and pleased to be here.
Good, good. Well, I want to talk about the Ray's situation first because I know that's a topic of important interest to a lot of people these days. But if we have time, I know that you're a former prosecutor, and I'm also concerned about the state of the Justice Department under the new administration. And if we have time to talk about that, I'd like to touch base on some of those issues as well. If you'd like to join the conversation with us today, you may do so by calling the station at 813-239-9663, or send us an email, dj@wmnfo.org, or text message at 813-433-0885. And please sign your texts and your emails and let us know where you're calling from. I want to thank John Dunn for answering the phones today. And so, let's get started. Let's talk about, I guess, because of Hurricane Milton, we can thank it for, I guess, people had wanted for years to have an open-air stadium here, and we got it, whether we wanted it or not. But can you give us a little background, Councilwoman Hanowitz, about where things stood before the hurricanes? And just sort of a 30,000-foot view of the agreements that are in place?
So, before the hurricanes, back in July, City Council and the County Commission had approved all the agreements that were required for the historic gas plant redevelopment and for the Ray's to play in the new stadium. That included 65 acres in the redevelopment portion. It included, obviously, having a Woodson museum, $50 million in community benefits. Part of the community benefits is a Woodson museum. They were contributing $10 million to that. There is obviously going to be a new stadium constructed. And then, of course, you've seen the pictures of the redevelopment and all the things that are supposed to come from the redevelopment. I have to say, though, every time you see the pictures, I want people to understand that's target development. The contract only has minimum development requirements, so, you know, just because it's in the picture doesn't mean eventually it's going to come out that way. So, that had all been signed now pending the bond approvals. And so, that's the money portion. Public funding is going into the stadium, and you have both the city contributing money and the county contributing money. The city's portion, let's say, is about $300 million. The county portion is 300 million. The county portion comes from bed tax money, and I want to make that clear. Everybody thinks all the money is bed tax money. All the money is not bed tax money. The city portion of the money is coming from the CRA, which is TIF money, and it's basically, at the end of the day, it's real estate taxes from downtown that fund and pay for the bonds. So, you have $600 million of public funding, but it doesn't stop there. We were also putting money for the infrastructure of the redevelopment, and that was about $130 million, plus another $12 million for a lift station, so you have $142 million. We don't have that money sitting in a bank account. That money, obviously, had to be borrowed, which is now with the issue of bonds that are coming. Once, if those bonds would be taken out by the city, the cost to the city with the cost of financing is almost close to $700 million that would be paid out for a period of 30 years. So, that's where we had, we had the agreements. They were signed. They were approved. It wasn't unanimous votes, but they were approved, and we were in the portion of the deal where we were going to go and consider the bond resolutions.
Okay. So, what was the vote at City Council? You were a no vote. Who else voted no?
So, at City Council, it was a 5-3 vote against the deal. Were Councilmembers Mohammed, Councilmembers Floyd, and myself. For the deal, we had Councilmembers Gabbard, Montanari, Fig Sanders, Gertis, and Driscoll. I should note that Councilmember Montanari is no longer on City Council, and he hasn't been involved in these votes because he had to resign to run for his, for the seat in the House, the State House. So, right now, we are short one City Council member. We have a district, actually, that's not technic, although it's represented by us because we all get voted in the general election by everyone in the city of St. Petersburg. District 3 does not have representation now in the form of a City Council member because they get sworn in, according to our city charter, in January, which is very different than the County Commission because the new County Commissioners just took office this month.
Okay. And who was taking Montanari's place?
Mike Harding was elected.
Okay. All right. And then, at the county level, it also passed. And so, it's sort of interesting now that, you know, we have contracts in place, and there's all this talk about the bonds, but they're not really connected together, correct?
Right. I mean, they are connected, obviously.
I mean, you've got to have the money, and you have to raise the money.
Right. You have to have the money, but the, I think what you're alluding to is the fact that you can't bind a future City Council, or you can't bound, you know, County Commission in the future to vote and say yes to these bonds. And so, that was still an issue that is pending, the bond, the supplemental bond resolutions for the approval by the different bodies of government in terms of, you know, at City Council, we hold the purse strings. We have to approve all these monies. And same thing in the County Commission. The County Commission vote in July was also not unanimous. That was a 5-2 vote. You had Commissioners Peters, Scott, Long, Justice, and Flowers voting for it, and against it were Commissioners Eggers and LaFalla. And they also, of course, had an election, and that changed the composition of the County Commission.
So, two of the people who voted yes, Charlie Justice and Janet Long, who didn't run again, are no longer on the County Commission as a result of the election, and two people that were elected are really not in favor of the deal? Is that fair to say, from what you've heard?
I think No Wiki has made it very clear. I think Commissioner Chris Shear also expressed concerns at the last County Commission meeting, and I'm not going to speak for them, but I think that is a concern of everyone, is that they are not a guaranteed vote, which, you know, frankly, I don't think anybody should be a guaranteed vote. They just got on the County Commission, and they're like even the new, the new City Council members that are going to come onto City Council, right? They have the opportunity to go ahead and question and decide whether or not this is the appropriate thing to do.
So, under a contract, you have the concept of risk of loss, right? If construction of the stadium ends up costing more than what was anticipated, who has the risk of loss here under the stadium contract?
So, the stadium contract, all cost overruns were supposed to be borne by the Ray's. And there is a provision in the contract, and that's Section 7.4 of the contract, and it states that they're responsible for cost overruns, including those that are from unforeseen conditions. And what unforeseen conditions just happened.
Yeah, we had a couple of big storms, didn't we?
Yes, we did. So, you know, the idea that, you know, they had, and they had stated that, you know, they were expecting to put in $700 million for the stadium, and now their costs have increased. They sent a letter to the County Commission, which is, I think, what you're kind of alluding to, right before the last County Commission meeting, two hours before the County Commission meeting, which I think some considered a shot across the bow. And basically, there, they said that, you know, they're, the delay in the vote in the County Commission, which, by the way, did not have to happen, but the delay in the vote in the County Commission has caused their costs to increase and are significantly higher, and they are not able to absorb these costs alone.
But there's really nothing that's preventing the Ray's from starting to construct that stadium now, right?
I mean, there is nothing right now that, based on the contracts, that would suggest that just because costs have increased, they can just decide unilaterally that, well, this doesn't work for us anymore.
Okay.
But I say that because that's the reason they're giving. There is a provision in the contract that they can terminate the contract at will. So, they send that letter with language that almost suggests that they want to terminate the contract, yet it's not legal notice. You know, there are certain requirements under, under the agreement, how you provide notice, so on and so forth. And, you know, they're saying it in the letter, but they're really not saying it, but they have that ability to just terminate. And why haven't they done that? If this is so bad for them, they could have sent the letter and said, well, we're just terminating everything.
But they haven't done that yet?
No. At least to them, that is not, that is not where they are, no. They are, they're letting everyone know that they can't absorb the costs alone.
So, yesterday, the Chair of the Pinellas County Commission, Kathleen Peters, sent a letter to the Ray's, and she asked them to tell us your intentions by this Sunday, December 1st, on whether the Ray's intend to proceed with building the new stadium. Be interesting to see if they respond to that.
Yes. My understanding is that there were, there was a response that was provided regarding it, saying, and this came from Brian Ald, "We're eager to work with all partners on the solution for the 2029 season that keeps Major League Baseball in Tampa Bay for generations to come. As we always have, we will maintain contact with the city and county as we navigate our future." So, right now, we're in a waiting game here. Clearly, the parties are not on the same page in terms of where the deal is and the terms of the deal. And, you know, based on what happened at the City Council meeting last Thursday, it was clear that the administration and the Ray's need to have further discussions to see where this ends up because there is no clarity. Once you get a letter from the Ray's, like they have sent, how could we believe that anything is going to happen when they're telling us they're not able to?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a concept in the law called anticipatory breach of contract, where you actually give indication in advance of a deadline of the contract, that I'm just not going to, I'm not going to fulfill my obligations.
Right.
They haven't done that per se, but that doesn't have to be in writing. It can be by action, too.
That's right.
So, it'll be interesting to see, you know, what they want to do, but it doesn't serve anybody well to drag this thing out. The city, for example, has some responsibilities to repair the trop, correct?
That's correct.
So, there's a lease with the Tropicana Field between the Ray's and the city that runs through 2028. And so, they, they were planning to play, or excuse me, through 2027.
Yeah, 2027, and for the 2028 season.
Yeah. So, they were, they were planning to play there in 2025, 26, and 27, and then we're going to move into the new stadium. And now, as a result of the hurricanes, everything has changed. So, they're, they're moving to Tampa for next year, much lower capacity in Steinbrenner Field than there is at the trop. What's the city's plan with respect to repairing the trop?
Well, look, right now, based on the last meeting, we had the issue of approving repairs to the roof. And my issue with approving any repairs right now is how can we, this is all taxpayer money. How can we go forward pretending that the letter that they provided does not exist? Like, the reality is, we need clarity. Are they going to play at the trop? Are they not going to play at the trop? What's going to happen? Are they going to build a stadium? I mean, if they're saying that there is no stadium that's going to happen, are they even wanting to play ever again at Tropicana Field? They've already said 2025 is not happening. They've also indicated they don't believe that 2026 is going to happen at the Tropicana Field either, even though administration believes that the stadium can be ready, the trop repairs could be ready by 2026. We all know, and I, I'll give them this, you cannot guarantee that everything's going to be fixed by 2026, and that's fair because with construction, and once they go in, and delays, and getting this and that, they need certainty for 2026 season. So, now you have 2025, 2026. So, they're not playing there. They don't, they already said they don't want us to fix the trop. So, what's the plan? And we know that this agreement, the use agreement, has certain requirements, and obviously, the city's going to comply with their requirements. But the reality is, that amendment, that agreement has been amended, I don't know, 11 times. As you know, as an attorney, Gary, parties can come to an agreement and decide what is best to do under these circumstances. So, that agreement itself can be amended. And I think it's fair to allow the parties to have those discussions. That was part of the reason when we had the meeting on Thursday, and we started, and I questioned Brian Ald on the letter at the beginning, because I called him twice up to the podium, but at the beginning, when we were talking about the repairs, I asked whether or not there was a possibility that there could be some, you know, some other option, some other option when it came to the trop. And he seemed amenable, and I asked for a motion to defer it, so that way, to allow the parties to discuss, so they can come back to, with something for City Council that is clear. And that didn't turn out, that meeting went off the rails, obviously, and it didn't turn out that way, although at the end, they ended up, you know, deferring pretty much, and nothing happened in terms of repairing the stadium or approving the bonds. So, it's right now unclear in terms of what's going to happen. To your question, it is unclear. That's a lot of money. If you saw the damage report, it was $55 million, and this is all preliminary. Nobody actually believes that's probably going to be the cost. It's going to be much higher.
What kind of damage is there other than the roof? Obviously, it's gone, but needs to be replaced. But what other damage occurred inside?
I mean, you have the roof replacement. You have electrical systems. You have office and storage areas, a ballpark. I mean, there's damage everywhere, and the report is pretty lengthy in terms of the damage assessments. And there is also, and by the way, that cost estimate does not include replacing the acoustical roof membrane, and they haven't, and that was something that was part of the original stadium design to enhance the sound quality. And so, that estimate was supposed to arrive at some point later. We haven't received that estimate, so I don't know what that costs. Right now, the city has approved 6.5, about $6.5 million in remediation to make sure that the stadium is protected in the meantime, to determine what path is forward, just obviously for insurance purposes and to protect the city's interests.
Yeah, I know when the contracts came up for discussion earlier, the Sierra Club in particular in Pinellas County had been very clear that they had certain requirements that they wanted to put, they'd like to see the Ray's agree to as part of the development of the stadium. And they included things like, oh, the ability for it to withstand a category five hurricane, and the ability for it to be able to generate its own energy so that it could be a standalone facility that could serve as a shelter, an emergency shelter during a hurricane, so that we wouldn't end up with a situation like they had in New Orleans, where the Superdome was forced to be an emergency shelter, and it didn't go well, to put it mildly.
That is correct.
But the Ray's basically said, no, we don't really want to do that. We like the design we have. We love the glass facade that was shown in those pretty drawings that you referenced earlier.
Yeah.
But, you know, I was watching live when, on TV, when they showed the trop and the roof coming off, and I said, aha, now maybe they'll rethink, you know, building it to withstand a category five. But apparently, they've rethought about rebuilding at all, so.
Yes, that's not an image that anyone's going to forget. I will tell you that the Sierra Club had a lengthy letter with a lot of the requests. I was in the minority, and the reality is, you have to have a majority of City Council to even have been for a lot of the changes that were required, and the votes weren't there. I will tell you, in that last, one of the meetings, Committee of the Whole, right before the last votes, I had a discussion with Hines, and they said, we are committed. And I, and my question to them, please show me in this paragraph where you're actually committed, and the language in the agreement when it applied to sustainability, said they were going to identify, identify sustainability strategies. And my point was, that needed to be changed to the word implement, which was the only change that eventually happened in terms of the language and sustainability issues, was from identify to implement, and even that was a fight.
Yeah, the Sierra Club had already identified them for them.
Right.
Okay, we do have a caller. Someone's calling in?
We have Jerry in St. Pete.
Okay. Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for taking my call. So, you know, I like, I really like baseball a lot, and I bet a lot of people really like baseball a lot. So, my understanding is, without being an attorney, that an unusual precedent has happened just last night. And my question is, why don't we just ask the governor and the oncoming president what he thinks about this, and let's just get it done? What do you think? Think?
I wish it was that easy. You know, everybody's in the posturing phase at this point and renegotiating. That's what this really is. They're, they're trying to get more money out of someone, whether it's St. Petersburg in Pinellas County, or maybe over in Tampa, which they've been flirting with for, what, 17 years or so? Or maybe it's Montreal, you know? Let's not forget that a couple of years ago, they were happy to go to Montreal for half the season. I actually went to a presentation of the top brass. There was a group of the South Tampa Chamber of Commerce that came over for a game, and it was right when they were announcing that plan, and they stood up there and they, they said, this is, this'll be great, you know? And people raised their hands and said, so let me get this right. You're going to play the spring games and early summer games here, and then you're going to go to Montreal after that? And they said, yeah. And said, okay, so if you make the playoffs, and we're in the World Series, do we get any of those games? And they didn't really have an answer for that, so.
Well, Gary, I have to say, I agree with your assessment. This is, you know, when you read the letter that was sent out, which, by the way, no one forced a race to send it out, the fact that there was an election and there were different people elected, that's part of the risk. If there was an issue that they were concerned about and had to have the deal done by a certain date, they could have had that in the contract. Everyone knew November elections were coming. That is, that is a risk that is clear to all the parties, and they could have mitigated for that risk, and they did not. As a matter of fact, they decided that they would take on all cost overruns, and no matter what the circumstances were. And so, when you read the letter and they talk about they're not able to absorb all the costs alone, I mean, it's clear that there is going to be some ask, obviously, for additional money. And I will say that at the end of their, their letter, you know, they state, while we are focused on preparing for a unique 2025 season, we stand ready to work on a new solution with any and all willing partners to preserve the future of Major League Baseball in Tampa Bay for generations to come. They don't say the city of St. Pete, and they're pretty broad in their language, and even the fact that they use Tampa Bay, that's not, that's not even a given either.
Yeah. We do have an email, Sean.
Yeah, let me read this email that comes from CP in Palmetto. And I just want to remind people that you're listening to Tuesday Cafe. We're broadcasting from the studios of WMNF in Tampa. And CP says that Ray's can go to greener pastures. He also says that without the Ray's, the gas plant district is of lesser value, just like when Raymond James moved out of downtown, just like when Templeton Funds moved out, your engines moved away. CP also says, by the way, how many sports teams have knocked on St. Pete's door in the last few years? My guess, zero. CP says, how stupid is St. Pete going to look when the Ray's leave? And he finally wraps up by saying, stupid, how stupid is St. Pete going to look when the city spends $50 million for the Ray's to play for three years? So, those are comments from CP in Palmetto.
One of the things I want to know is, if the land is not worth that much anymore, then I want to make sure that they don't have any claim to it because I guarantee you, there are going to be discussions as to whether or not they want to keep the redevelopment rights. So, they've always said, well, it's not, it's not worth it without the stadium. Well, then, if it's not worth it, they shouldn't have any redevelopment rights. So, we will see how that plays out.
Yeah, that's, that's always been one of the questions when the agreements were being negotiated the first time, was, you know, what's the value of that land? And there hadn't been any recent appraisals of it that really showed what the value was. And, or a lot of people that were concerned that the Ray's were getting, you know, a windfall there, so.
That's, that's exactly right. The appraised value, and I believe the date of the last appraisal was in January of 2023, and that was $275, $79 million, and it wasn't even for the, all the 65 acres they're redeveloping. I think it was for 60-something point acres of land. And by the way, that appraisal did not include all the infrastructure that we're putting in that land, which is $142 million worth. And they are, according to the agreement, only giving us $105 million for the land. So, if you look at the plain numbers, we're putting in more in infrastructure than we are actually getting for the land. That's 65 acres of downtown land in St. Petersburg. And St. Petersburg is not the same St. Petersburg when the Ray's first arrived. Land, you can't find 65 acres of land. Where in Florida, in a downtown center, are you going to find 65 acres of land to redevelop like that?
In a vibrant downtown.
In a vibrant downtown.
Yeah.
I was just out on Beach Drive and, you know, out in a restaurant, and we were having, you know, dinner, and it was Sunday night. And I remember we first moved in St. Pete, and it wasn't, that wasn't the case, right? When you see people all down Beach Drive, there were little pockets of activity, but now it's like the activity is, is just spread everywhere. And you see what's happened with the pier, and that's publicly owned, and it's, it's brought a lot of people into downtown in the area. brought a lot of people into downtown in the area, the pier itself. I'm not saying that, and to be clear, I'm not saying that the Rays don't have any value. The issue is you have to look at the agreements and what the deal is and what the terms are. And the question is, how much is too much? And frankly, you know, here we are in a situation where this letter that the Rays have sent, they did it on their own. Nobody forced them to send this and they're trying to blame the county commission for a delay of vote. There is no way that that delay of three weeks, by the way, we delayed the vote. A hurricane happened. That in no way caused this.
Right, yeah. So we have another caller.
The caller dropped off from Port Ritchie, but if they want to call back, you can. 813-239-9663. You can email dj@wmnf.org or text 813-433-0885. Please sign your name and where you're texting or calling from, please. And we'll, we'll continue the discussion on Tuesday Cafe, co-hosted by, or sorry, guest hosted by Gary Gibbons this week.
And my special guest is Lisette Hanawitz from the St. Petersburg City Council, who happens to be my city councilwoman and I'm so proud that she represents us because she asks the tough questions and I, I really appreciate that.
I agree.
So the hurricanes opened a lot of eyes to the residents of St. Petersburg and Tampa in terms of the existing infrastructure of things like potable drinking water supplies and sewer service. For example, they constructed a dam around Tampa General Hospital to keep the floodwaters from impacting the hospital. And we know that there was intense flooding in places that were not listed as flood zones on the FEMA maps. And so a lot of people had damage with no flood insurance. What are some of the lessons that we've learned in terms of the deficiencies in our basic infrastructure that we need to live healthy lives following major storms like this?
Look, I am on the Public Services and Infrastructure Committee. I share that committee. To give a little bit of background, I went through Hurricane Andrew in Miami back in the early 90s and I understand the effects of a storm on the city. I saw it. I saw what a category five did to Homestead. You couldn't even find a landmark in that area. They were tent cities. The military had to come in and it was a long road of recovery. And I'll tell you, it was, I think in the hundreds of thousands of people were misplaced. Okay, that reality has always existed in Florida and our storm season is from June 1st through November 30th. It's half the year. So it's not an issue of if, it's an issue of when. And I will say that the impact of a category five storm in Florida and what it can cause for our insurance industry and everyone, it doesn't have to hit St. Pete. It could hit another metropolitan area and we're gonna feel the effects economically. And so it is important for us to prepare. So the idea that, well, it's never happened here, and I heard a lot about that in terms of flooding, even though people are in evacuation zones, you know, you can only put off the inevitable at some point and you have to prepare and you have to kind of mitigate for what the effects are. I'm not saying you're gonna be able to get rid of all the risk, but you do have to find a way to mitigate. And I think a lot of folks, I will tell you, going through Hurricane Andrew was scary. And you think about going through the storm, what people don't think about is after the storm and what happens after the storm and the damage it causes in the city, not only individually, but to its infrastructure. And there's a reason why you get all these, you know, lists of things to do, you know, fill your tub with water, right? And, and have all this food, be prepared for not having electricity. Because that shows you that preparation and if you look at those items, what does it show you? What the risks are? The risks are you may not have potable water, you may not be able to use electricity for a prolonged period of time. And when it comes to our sewage systems, it's the same thing. Our sewage plants, I will tell you, the first storm in Helene, I found out right before the press conference that that plant was gonna be shut down and that affected half my district. Half my district, by the way, was not in evacuation zone. And I was furious because the reality is those folks should have been able to make decisions for themselves and their family as to whether or not they wanted to deal with that. And there are people with special needs and they could have said, we don't want to stay here. And so that messaging did not go out. Thing changed for Hurricane Milton. When the second storm is coming, there was messaging out, but I still think people don't understand what it is to be without
Yeah.
... potable water or the sewage plants until it happens. And they, one thing is talking about, and the other thing is the reality of like, oh my God, what happens now? And we have hospitals that were affected by this. So there were two plants that were, had to be taken down and that was the northeast plant, the southwest plant. And the reality is, the reason they had to take it down is because if they left it on, it could, it could cause damage to the systems that would be, you know, would take a very long time to fix. So they had to shut down to protect those systems. Those plants are kind of at the lower, you know, kind of lower lying areas of the city because everything kind of works through gravity.
It's a gravity system, folks.
It's a gravity
It all flows downhill, if you know what I mean.
That's exactly right. It all flows downhill. So, so we have, we have realized this is an issue that we have to deal with, I think. I think people have to go through the experience to kind of sound the alarm because we knew, we knew this. I mean, I, I think people knew this already. It's in the Integrated Water Resources Master Plan that was done back then in terms of making certain improvements to these plants and it's just investing money into these plants to get these projects done. And now making sure that if those recommendations aren't sufficient to go forward and do recommendations and do improvements that pertain to whatever has changed in our environment. And if our storms are stronger and we know that we're experiencing stronger storms, then we may have to make, you know, better improvements. So I requested after the storm, a referral to the PSI Committee for an update on the city's wastewater and collection facilities and the capital projects identified, both funded and not funded, to address the natural hazards associated with all the facilities. And we have three facilities, we have the northeast, northwest and southwest. And I will tell you that those conversations are gonna be happening and I expect administration to provide solutions, not just in the future, but what happens if, they've mentioned, well, the northeast plant, there is a plan to upgrade the systems and raise the electrical system. So if there is a storm surge that comes in, they're not affected. Okay, that may be in 2026. Well, what happens between now and 2026? And so whether it's installing perimeter flood barriers, permanent ones, now that's something that we will have to look at. And whatever the cost is, I think it's important because I will tell you, I'm not worried just about our residents having the ability to be able to use, you know, the bathroom. It's also the hospitals. All our hospitals are served by these plants.
Yeah.
And that's scary that you could have a huge storm hit and I asked in the meeting if we would get a 10-foot surge from this storm, if it would have actually hit us. And by the way, it was horrible and it was horrible for a lot of people and they lost a lot from the storm. Believe it or not, it was the best case scenario. Because if we would have got in the direct air or hit above us and we would have gotten that storm surge, that would have been a 10-foot storm surge hitting our coast. And I was told that if a 10, 10-foot storm surge happened, we could have been without our sewage plants anywhere from four to 40 something days.
Yeah, you, you mentioned that at our Neighborhood Association meeting and you got my attention when you said, we couldn't flush the toilet for 40 days. So, you know, it's a huge problem in this area and I don't know if, if people have not looked at this, I want to, if you really want to be scared about living in this area, but you should go and look at what the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council did. They've done it, a study called Project Phoenix.
Mm-hmm.
At Phoenix as in
And 2.0 too, right?
2.0, yeah. As in rising from the ashes because it's, it's a worst case scenario of a category four or five making landfall at Indian Rocks Beach. And that throws the maximum amount of storm surge up into Tampa Bay. And there's, you know, the, the scenario is that there could be 25 feet of storm surge in downtown Tampa. And there could be power outages for up to 60 days.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Not six, 60. So, you know, it, it's really something that I think we've, we've not paid enough attention to over the years and we've been very lucky that we've been missed some of these things. But I think it's time to really focus on that.
Well, think about, Gary, one of the things that scares me, think about the hospitals in those areas. And we are on our peninsula and they closed all the bridges. And you have, if you had to evacuate all those patients from all those hospitals, how would you do that?
Yeah.
You have all children's, St. Anthony's, all these hospitals in our area, obviously Tampa General in Tampa. And what would happen if those hospitals have to be evacuated or don't have the critical systems? You know, they can have, you know, the, the sewage, they don't have a sewage plant on site. They may have obviously generators and water, but they don't have a sewage plant.
Yep.
And so those are really important issues and I, I do think that not just the city, but organizations throughout our region really need to look at their disaster plans and talk to their partners and make sure that they have the appropriate plans in place for when a storm, whether it's a category three, four, or five, whatever it may be, happens, so they are prepared for that.
We do have another caller.
Yeah, we do. And, you know, people want to talk about the Rays as well. So let me read a couple of text messages and then you can respond to those if you'd like, and then we can get to Pop in St. Pete in just a minute. But we did get an email from the 727 area code who says, I'm not a resident of St. Pete. It sounds like they live in Seminole. They've been here for 30 years, but they do know the value of land and how much affordable housing that 65 acres could support. They could add lots of public businesses as well. I would not want my taxes going to support a sports team of any sort. So that's our message from email in Seminole. And also we have a, Jeff is writing, if the Rays leave, how much does it take away from the attractiveness of living in the area? So if you'd like to address those two questions and then we'll get to Pop in St. Pete in just a minute.
Okay, so I, I mean, obviously there are people that are for the Rays and there are people against the Rays, but I would contend this is not about just the Rays baseball team. I mean, this is a business deal. And at the end of the day, it takes willing partners to make things happen. So let's assume that the deal that was negotiated goes forward, you still have to have willing partners in the Rays and their organization to make it happen. And right now, they were, they sent a letter suggesting that they couldn't make it happen. In terms of what you could do with that land, I have never been a believer that you need a baseball stadium to make a great neighborhood or to make, to create a place that draws people. If you look at the majority of really cool neighborhoods out there, do they really need a stadium? How many people actually go and travel just to go to a stadium? Or maybe they go to a museum? I'm not saying that there are not folks out there that love sports and go just to visit cities for stadiums, but there are folks out there that do other things when they visit cities and don't necessarily go to stadium. And to just base our identity on one thing, our city is so dynamic and it's such a neat place to come, to visit, you know? And when I bring visitors here in the city of St. Petersburg, I will tell you, you know, they go and visit our museums, they love going, you know, to the beaches, they love obviously the, the weather and going out to our restaurants and just the energy of our city and the arts and the murals and the people and the culture. And are the Rays part of it? Yes, but they're not the only thing. And so sometimes it frustrates me when it's an all or nothing. We live in a world where it seems like everything is black and white or it's one thing or the other and it's not. I think it takes a lot to make a great city. It's not one individual, it's not one organization. And I think St. Petersburg is much bigger than that.
And, and let's face it, it's becoming more and more expensive to live here and we're, we're pricing people out of this market that provide, you know, jobs that, that are service oriented jobs for these restaurants and, and, and all of these things that, that we rely on. And it's, it's important, I think, for us to not lose sight of the fact that there is land available that could be developed for, for some affordable housing. And, and one of my criticisms of the existing deal was the fact that that wasn't required to be built earlier in the, in the process. And they, they kicked the can down the road for 20 or 30 years and who knows what affordable housing means 30 years from now.
Well, and to your point, Gary, I mean, look, when you, when you think about the redevelopment and you look at the pictures and everybody sees that, it's like, oh, great. This is wonderful. It would be great to see that. But what they don't realize is that that is driven by contractual terms. And that doesn't necessarily happen overnight and that process is not 10 or 20 years, it could be 30 years. And frankly, it never even really ends up exactly how the pictures show most of the times, could things change? And the language of the contract allows them a lot of flexibility and there is a lot of room for delays. And the idea that this development is happening within the next five to 10 years completely, it's not, based on the language of the contract, there are some things that can happen, but not what people think is gonna happen within that period of time. That's 65 acres of land. Have you seen how long it takes to get a building up lately?
Yeah, yeah. We do have one more call?
Yeah, we have Pop in St. Pete. Go ahead, Pop.
Yes, thank you. My question is about this stadium in Tampa. Is that a fee and how much that'll be for the Rays to play over there?
The Steinbrenner Field holds a little over 11,000 people, as I understand it. And that, that's one of the concerns that the Rays have expressed in this letter that they sent. They're starting to do the math on how much income they're going to lose by playing in a smaller place, although, you know, attendance has been an issue at the trop. I think they've been averaging closer to 15,000 or 16,000. So if you lose 5,000 or 6,000 per night, times 81 games, times, I don't know, $45 or $50 a ticket, you know, it's nine or $10 million lost just by playing in Tampa. So, you know, they're, they're starting to feel the pinch. It's probably not as much as they're gonna have to pay Wander Franco, but that's another story, right?
But what I'm trying to understand as well is that, is the stadium gonna be free for us to use or they're gonna have a fee to it?
I don't know what the arrangements are that they've made. I know that the Rays are paying up to a million dollars or so for some improvements to the visiting clubhouse to make it more Major League ready supposedly. And, and the other reason they liked that field in Tampa versus the ones in St. Pete that the Phillies and the Blue Jays play in was that there are some luxury suites at the Steinbrenner Field that they can monetize for more money.
And my understanding also from them was that it was, it took a lot less money to get Steinbrenner Field ready for them to play.
Yeah, they've already, the Yankees have already spent a lot of money on that field. Yeah, they've already, the Yankees have already spent a lot of money on that field themselves. So that's one of the things that they've jumped on.
Jane in St. Petersburg says, thank you for all the important information on your show today. So thanks for that comment, Jane.
I think I know who that is. Okay. So we only have a few minutes left, and I, but I do want to ask you this question, because it's been bugging me a lot, watching the news lately. You're, you're a former, former federal prosecutor. And what we've seen from the new administration is, they, they want to weaponize the, the Justice Department and go after enemies of the president. Can you tell me, tell the folks listening, how powerful the job of a federal prosecutor is, and how easily that could be misused?
Look, I was, first, I was a state prosecutor in Pinellas County for about five years, and then I became a federal prosecutor in Tampa. And, you know, the power of prosecutors, I mean, they hold people's liberty in their hands, right? They decide what cases they investigate, and what cases they prosecute. As a policy matter, the office could decide, you know, they are not going to pursue a certain cases, you know, in fairness. And they're always, their job at the end of the day is to seek justice. That is the job of prosecutors, and to enforce the law, and be fair. And the idea that it is going to be used as a weapon to punish your opponents, or reward your friends, that is not something I ever saw play out, whether I was a state prosecutor, or a federal prosecutor. Because I never had my bosses use the power of their office to ensure that it was used as a weapon somehow. It was always in the administration of justice.
Yeah. And it's troubling also that Tampa's own Pam Bondi, who is the nominee for Attorney General, which is the chief law enforcement officer of the United States, was on Fox less than a year ago, saying that, you know, once we get in there, we're going to go after the bad prosecutors, and, and all these people that, that involved, you know, were involved in investigating Donald Trump during the last two years. And it's just frightening to me.
Look, she's clearly loyal to Donald Trump. She is going to obviously make sure that his agenda is pursued. But I will tell you one thing, investigating someone is very different than initiating charges without evidence. Those are two completely things. Just because you're investigating, doesn't mean that you're going to be able to initiate charges later on.
Right. Okay. Well, we are coming to the end of the show. And Lisette, thank you so much for being here today. We, we appreciate everything that you've done for the city throughout these negotiations, and wish that you were going to have more of a relaxing Thanksgiving coming up. But I'm sure things will be coming through your email hourly as we, as we move forward. I want to thank Sean for letting me host today. And I want everybody to stay tuned. Coming up is Wavemakers with Janet and Tom Scherberger. And their guest is going to be Sadie Dingfelter. It's going to be a fascinating show. She has a neurological disorder that, and she's unable to recognize people's faces. And imagine going through life with that. So stay tuned, listen to that. And following, following Wavemakers will be
Wide Awake America.
Wide Awake America with Nadine Smith, which is a fabulous show. I listen to it all the time. So please, everybody enjoy your Thanksgiving, or Thanksgivens for my family. And stay tuned to WMNF. We are WMNF Tampa.